Good evening, citizens of Portsmouth. Invited guests, in addition to city staff and all of those who are present, I want to acknowledge my colleagues on council, as well as our city manager, Mr. Carter, our city attorney, who is not with us tonight, but we have Mr. Challenger, Attorney Challenger, standing in for our city attorney, Ms. Lavanda Graham Williams, of course, our city clerk, Ms. Deborah White. I want to thank you all for joining us at this public work session today. And so, we will begin by asking my colleagues to note your attendance electronically.
Five members of city council are present.
Thank you, ma'am. And so, Mr. Carter, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, mayor. Good evening, council, all the attendants. We have a few presentations for you this evening, the first of which is a holdover from our previous meeting. Ms. Sherri Neal is going to provide our legislative agenda. She will get us started, followed by Mr. Harrell and the HRTS presentation. Finally, we have an update on some of our CIP projects by our city engineer, Mr. James Wright. Ms. Sherri, are you ready?
Yes, sir.
The floor is yours.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening, Ms. Neal. Welcome.
Mayor Glover, Vice Mayor Lucas Burke, honorable members of the city council. It is my pleasure to be here with you this evening to present to you the recommendations from your Portsmouth City Council Legislative Advisory Committee on Initiatives for the 2025 state and federal legislative packages. My presentation this evening will proceed as follows. I'll first give you an update on our results of the 2024 legislative package. Following that, there will be the 2025 budget and legislative initiatives. After that, our federal public policy initiatives. I'll share a few important dates and next steps, and then attempt to answer any questions you may have. So, as you may recall, our legislative package for 2024, we kept it small because of the fact that it was a new legislative season, and we had a large turnover of legislators in the Senate and in the House. And so, we had two legislative requests. One was for a charter change, and they were technical amendments, basically bringing our charter in line with the Code of Virginia. That the charter changes passed, they were signed into the law by the governor in April of this year. We also have been advancing this issue for establishing a model criminal history screening policy, similar to the one that HUD has established for its housing providers, for rental housing providers. And in short, what it does is that it provides a guideline for housing providers that receive any federal funding, and in this case, it would also be any state funding or local funding to provide rental housing guideline as to how to deal with criminal history background checks, so that people with felony convictions are not automatically denied housing, creating to the number of unhoused people in our communities. We were successful in getting this bill passed through both the House and the Senate, and unfortunately, it was vetoed by the governor. We could not get enough votes to override that veto, but you will see this again in our 2025 package, because it was thought by our state delegation that it was an important enough issue that we should revisit it again in '25. Our budget amendment request that we had in '24, one was for an increase in our port host communities revitalization fund. You may recall, this is a fund that was established at the behest of the city of Portsmouth, working in conjunction with our sister port cities and other stakeholders. It was originally capitalized at a million. We went back again. We asked for more. We actually got another half a million a couple of sessions ago. We went back again to the well, and this time, we received $900,000 more in that particular fund. We are trying to get it up to 3 million, and so, this is another one that you're going to see in the 2025 listing. Unfortunately, what was not funded is the increase in the Virginia Port Authority road impact fees. As you can recall, in 2006, this was something that former Delegate Joanna did for the host cities of the port. He had $1 million allocated for the use of maintaining our roads that are impacted by truck traffic. It's been over 16 years. That $1 million is now worth less than half a million. The port has increased its footprint. The truck traffic has increased, but yet, the money hasn't gone up. So, we were not successful in getting this funded, but this is also included in our 2025 list of budget amendments. Listed here are just some results of some of the statewide public policy initiatives that we followed or we supported. I'm not going to go through each one. If you have any questions on any of them, I can come back to them, but in the interest of time, I was going to move forward. To the 2025 suggested legislation and budget initiatives, state and federal, I would first like to thank all of the department staff in the city that contributed suggestions for our package, and I also thank our Portsmouth City Council Legislative Advisory Committee for all of their work on our packages, and for city council members who also contributed to the package. These items that were suggested were all vetted through the committee several times. We met, and we also met with our state delegation members on it. What you have before you at this time are the items that were thought to be the most viable, I guess I would say, and for council's consideration. So, we have four charter changes requests. Two of them we had before. You recall the recall process and non-interference. We're looking at going back to have that again. And then, there's two other charter changes requested. One, to provide authority for the council to remedy evidence-based disparities and discrimination, adding this language to our charter, as well as adding language to our charter that would request and provide authority to the city manager to collect and provide data to support city efforts to address disparity and discrimination, which goes along with, I believe, your study that you're doing for swamp businesses. Again, this is the legislative request that we're going back with for the housing issue, dealing with the criminal history background checks for rentals. There's also, was a request for a city council resolution to adopt a resolution by council to support the U.S. Surgeon General's declaration that gun violence is a public health crisis. While this slide says state legislative initiatives, should the city council decide to move forward with this resolution, it would also be a federal issue, because we would send a copy to our federal delegation as well. Listed here, we have a list of state budget requests that we have vetted and went through. Several of them, the first, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, are from our CIP projects, some of the top items in our CIP projects, and then, the others were ones that I spoke about already, and that we were going back to the requests for increased funding in these particular line items. Listed here are some regional statewide and public policy initiatives. This is not an exclusive list. There will be others as we work along with our partners, such as HRT, which is in the room, Planning District Commission, and the Virginia Municipal League, Virginia First Cities, and others. And as for the federal legislative and public policy initiatives, those are, we basically, with the federal level, we basically have just the initiatives, and we're supporting like Corumfer, National League of Cities, Planning District Commission, and others on various items here. So, without going through each item on that list, and again, this is not exclusive either, this is just a list of some of the things that we've highlighted. For the next steps, pending what council does tonight, we will have the final presentation on the 22nd with our legislators, first state legislators for our joint meeting, and then, council would be set to adopt by resolution that evening the legislative initiatives for both the federal and the state. Of course, we all know that the election day is the 5th of November. The last day to prefile any legislation is going to be on the 25th of November. All drafts, legislation to be prefiled, that date just came out, it's December 13th. Then, on January 3rd, the first half of the new 119th Congress will begin, and then, on the 8th of January, 2025 is the first day of the Virginia General Assembly session, and this is a short session, it's an off-budget year, so this is a six-week session. Any questions? I will try to answer them.
Councilman Hugo, you have the floor, sir.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Good afternoon, Ms. Neal.
Good evening.
So, let's start with the city charter changes. So, I read through the Virginia Code regarding the recall process, and I can't figure out what changes by adopting this charter change. Can you summarize what's different from what the policy is or the ordinance is now?
Mayor Glover, Councilman Hugo, if I may, I would like to turn to our council on that.
Mr. Challenger, can you pose the question to Mr. Challenger?
Yeah, so, the city charter change for the recall process says that we want to simply use what the Virginia Code says. How is that different from what our current recall process is? I read through the Virginia Code, and I didn't see much difference from what our recall process already is.
My understanding is this issue came up before, this issue came up before maybe two years ago, and I know we brought this issue before the General Assembly two years ago. I can't explain to you the exact differences, because I'm not prepared to do that at this moment, but you give me some time to do so, I can do so.
Okay, I appreciate. Just a summary of what would be different if we actually had the General Assembly support that. Okay, two bullets down, authority for council remedy evidence-based disparities and discrimination. So, it's interesting that the title is remedy evidence-based disparities, because the language that is in our legislative package isn't shown here. That language not only includes evidence, but also includes anecdotes, and so anecdotes are not evidence. And so, I would propose to my colleagues that we strike any reference to anecdotes. I'm good with evidence, the benefit we have of doing the disparity study is we have evidence, and we don't need to base decisions on anecdote, because we all have anecdotes. Additionally, the language that was proposed in the legislative package only speaks to the impact of race, doesn't speak to the impact of gender, doesn't speak to the impact of disability, so there are other disparities that were identified in our MWBE policy is aiming to address those disparities. So, I don't think we should limit any charter change to only address issues of race. Moving on to the firearm violence. So, I'm not sure who chose the five bullets that are here, but I pulled the Surgeon General's report. The Surgeon General's report talks to violence interruption, talks to emergency preparedness as part of our safety program, and there are good things in here that our crime task force ought to be taken on. In the firearm risk reduction, these five bullets don't use the same language as what is in the Surgeon General's report, and so, I suggest that if we're going to refer to the Surgeon General's firearm violence, a public health crisis in America, we simply pull the language out of the Surgeon General's report and not make up our own language. Additionally, the Surgeon General lists a bunch of things beyond the five bullets that we have listed here, including tackling mental health and behavioral health issues that aren't listed here. So, in my opinion, this is an interesting social statement, but I don't know what good it does this. I mean, by adopting what the Surgeon General has actually outlined, we ought to be able to ask for additional safer community funding or funding for the implementation of our Crime and Gun Prevention Task Force elements that are more comprehensive than just listing the five bullets that we have here. And then, nowhere in our legislative package do we ask for toll relief. Toll relief was a big deal, pushed by Senator Lucas, this past legislative agenda. We didn't have it in our legislative package. I think we should have, so shame on me for that oversight, but I think we ought to have toll relief in every legislative agenda package that we send to the General Assembly, because that's where it's going to have to get fixed. Additionally, I would suggest to my colleagues, we're benefiting now from the grant funding that we got to deal with derelict boats, and the number of derelict boats that are in our waterways is more than the number of derelict boats that we got grant funding for, so we ought to ask the General Assembly for some additional assistance in extending that grant. And then, my final comment is, I wonder if you have spent any time talking with your counterpart that supports the school board and the school superintendent. Seems to me, we don't need to duplicate their package, but we certainly ought to reinforce with the General Assembly that we support the school system legislative agenda as part of our legislative agenda, and so, I think there ought to be something in our legislative agenda that outright says that. So, those are my comments back on what we've talked about so far this evening. Thank you.
Dr. Whitaker, you have the floor.
Yes, in response to some of the statements that Councilman Hugo suggested that council considers, going back to page nine, where it speaks to the state legislative initiatives, and where Councilman Hugo brought up the recall process, and there not being any different language, I would ask that our city attorney, Officer City Attorney, also look at previous council discussions that we had on this, because you will see there are significant differences between what our charter calls for and what the state, there are, our charter is pretty wide open for recall, but the state does delineate some items, and we did have a discussion on that when we brought this up previously, so that may be helpful also. Also, in regards to the language pertaining to the authority of council to remedy evidence-based disparities and discrimination, and Mr. Hugo mentioned, we don't need anecdote. The anecdotal language that I requested as part of the package, that language is trying to capture the Harvard and the UNC affirmative action case from the Supreme Court, where we know Justice Roberts left a loophole there in looking at past discriminatory actions. And so, the purpose that we use anecdotal there is because, as part of our disparity study, you will note that a portion of it is the anecdotal section, and that's where those businesses give testimony to past practices that they felt were discriminatory in Portsmouth. And so, I just want to let you know, that was the intent behind that, to try to capture the loophole that Justice Roberts left in those two Supreme Court cases. So, I think out of that context, that's why we're using anecdotal, and I believe that language in the charter should be reflected there. So, I just wanted to give you, that was the intent behind that.
Thank you, sir. And I did have a question. On the city charter changes on page nine, as it relates to non-interference or that particular clause in our charter, to interfere is a misdemeanor today, it's not a felony. Is that right or wrong?
As far as I know, mayor, yes.
It's a misdemeanor.
It's a misdemeanor.
It's not what it says here.
I was just overly.
A penalty from a felony, it says in here, that's not correct. It's a misdemeanor. And if you're found guilty of that misdemeanor, you could be removed from office, but to my knowledge, it's not a felony.
I think if I'm not mistaken, in our charter currently, it's a felony. It's not, it is a misdemeanor?
I'm pretty sure it's a misdemeanor.
All right, thank you. All right, thank you.
Could update that language, please?
We'll make that correction. Thank you, sir.
Councilman Hugo, sir, you have the floor.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, maybe as a follow-up to your comment, if we could have the attorney do the same thing for that charter change as for the item above it, give us a comparison of what's going to change from the way it is today in our charter to whatever language it is that we're asking for, so that we can see apples to apples, you know, what happens? What are the consequences of making the change? Thank you.
Vice Mayor Lucas Burke, you have the floor, ma'am.
Thank you, and thank you for the question, and I will also add my comments with the non-interference. As a person who was charged with non-interference, Section Code 3.11, I do know it well, and the city of Portsmouth is the only city that will charge you with a misdemeanor, a $500 fine, and lose your seat on the council. None of the other cities have the fine or the misdemeanor charge with that, so we had a listing. I don't know, I don't remember if you were on the council at the time, Mr. Councilman Hugo, but we compared it to three or four other cities, and Portsmouth was the most egregious, and it was probably like that to be the reason why that it was. We know who it was directed to handle, and I think that it is outside of our charter abilities right now. I think that we need to relook at our whole charter. That is something that our legislative committee talked about, reviewing the whole charter, because it was 70 years ago, well, 50 years ago, and many of us were not able to even serve on a council at that time. So, I think that there are plenty of changes that need to be addressed inside of that charter, and that's one that we put in before, and it did go before the General Assembly passed in the Senate, I think failed in the House, but we think that, you know, at this time, we should be able to get this through.
Thank you, right, mayor.
But in addition to that, city attorney, if you would bring back the requested changes, that would be great. Councilman Whitaker, sir. Dr. Whitaker, you have the floor, sir.
In regards to that non-interference, again, I think the overall, again, intent of council was to remove it from being such a punitive type of punishment there, and move it more in line with a censorship and a fine. And so, trying to outline the differences between this one, I think it's really just a desire of council to change that from being more punitive to less.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Moody, sir, you have the floor.
To the vice mayor's point on the blue ribbon, not blue ribbon commission, but on the charter review, about 20 years ago, we had a blue ribbon panel that went through the charter, but I don't think they actually finished the work. There were a lot of things that were taken out, some even pertain to tying horses up at a particular time, so I'm sure there's still a lot, lot to be called out of the charter, and I would like to see another blue ribbon panel commissioned to do exactly what the vice mayor suggested, and that's to review the charter. I think it's, that work needs to continue.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Tillage, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, mayor. First, I just want to say I'm glad to hear that there's support for charter review. I think that's something that's desperately needed for the city of Portsmouth, and so, I look forward to us hopefully putting that charge forward very, very soon. But I do have an item for the federal legislative public policy initiatives, and I think this one just kind of slipped my mind, but Pilot. I know that when we went to NLC back in March, we met with Senator Kane, Warner, Senator Warner, and Congressman Scott's office to talk about Pilot and the different situations we have with federal property, military bases, et cetera. And I do remember that Senator Kane had given us some feedback that seemed that he would be interested in kind of testing the waters with other localities across the country to see how those things could possibly work, if it's even possible. But I would like to see if we can add that to our federal legislative agenda, so that we can at least give him more of a formal framework, so that he can, him and his staff could maybe navigate it, and then, if they can't do it, so be it, but at least have the ask out there.
Thank you, councilman.
Councilman Moody, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, mayor. Getting back to the non-interference section reference, punitive fines, when we come back with that report, I don't think this council should be in a position to fine anyone, quite frankly. You're looking at the only member that's ever been fined, and I was fined $1,500, which I never got back, by the way. Went to court with it, I won, but I was never made whole with the $1,500. So, councils fining each other is nothing but politics at its worst, so I don't think any punitive fines should be in any of our charter language.
Thank you, councilman.
Thank you. Councilman Hugo.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. So, just to pile on to Councilman Tillage's comment, for the benefit of folks that don't know what Pilot is, it's payment in lieu of taxes. It's the funds that we're looking for to compensate the city for federal and potentially state encumbrance of property inside our boundaries, and I certainly support, we took that message to the Hill when we visited last year, and we need to keep taking that message to the Hill year over year. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Dr. Whitaker, sir, you have the floor.
Just want to remind my colleagues, and Ms. Neal is aware of this also, that the charter change regarding, changes regarding the recall process and the non-interference, both these measures were in position to be passed by the General Assembly, and some of you will remember, it was a last-minute move by a Republican representative that was playing politics with Portsmouth that caused for it to not get out of committee. And so, it was, there was no issue with it being passed, it was just some politics at the time. Now that we have a Democratic Senate, a House, there shouldn't be any problem.
That is correct, councilman. Good, thank you.
Okay, the other thing that I wanted to mention on the federal legislative agenda, one of the things that I learned when I went to the mayor's conferences, for example, CDBG, Community Development Block Grants, haven't been increased for 40 years, which has caused significant distress on cities across the country that count on those type of funds for housing and other initiatives. Can we put that on our federal legislative agenda? I've already been talking to Congressman Scott about that and Senator Kane, but I think we need to get a more all-in effort to kind of bring that one home.
Certainly, thank you, mayor. Yes, thank you.
Well, that concludes our comments, ma'am. Thank you for your time, and thank you for the work you do.
Thank you. We'll get this information to you guys and get your feedback again prior to the 22nd, in case there are any other changes that are needed, which our committee will meet again. Thank you very much. Appreciate you all, and have a good evening.
You too, Ms. Neal.
Thank you.
Manager Carter, you have the floor. Manager Carter, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to introduce, to those that may not know, but this is Mr. Harold. He is the Executive Director for HRT. And he's here tonight with his team to provide a presentation about our regional transportation system. Thank you, Mr. Harold.
Thank you. And Mr. Harold, before you begin, sir, I wanted to, first of all, thank you guys for coming. Many of my colleagues know that I serve on the Regional Board for HRT. And I want to acknowledge, as the Vice Chair, but I want to acknowledge some other folks that you brought with you. Ms. Sybil Pappas, who is an engineer with HRT, and Mr. Ray Amoruso. Thank you for all the work you do in our community and those shelters that you guys put up.
Well, thank you so much, Mr. Mayor, members of council, staff, and members of the public. We're certainly pleased to be here this evening. And certainly, Mayor Glover, we want to thank you for your hard work with our commission, chairing our Operations and Oversight Committee, which is where the heavy lifting is done relative to procurements in our operational status. So thank you so much for your regular commitment. I also want to recognize Commissioner Tony Goodwin, who is your gubernatorial appointee, who really jumped right in immediately and got very, very involved. So we certainly appreciate him being here this evening. As the mayor has indicated, I am here with colleagues Ray Amoruso and Sybil Pappas. And we have a short presentation. And certainly, we want to give you an overview of our system, our transit system. Many people believe that HRT can just decide where routes go. And the bottom line is the member of cities actually determine the levels of service. So when people approach us about new service, my next point is we need you to make sure that your city council and staff are aware of your interests. We also want to take a moment and talk about the ridership profile of our customers. We want to explain how service is indeed funded through the cost allocation agreement, which I alluded to before. We have some upcoming service board changes, some route changes that we believe will significantly improve service for customers within the city of Portsmouth, leaving and coming. And certainly passenger amenities, which is something that we've really focused on. And Ms. Pappas has done a tremendous job in terms of making sure that we treat all of our customers with dignity. Nothing upsets me more than when I see our customers sitting on carts and on the ground. And everybody should be treated with dignity. And we feel very strongly about that. Also, we've got some exciting ferry dock improvements. I know that's something that the council has been very interested in. And finally, I would say, and I've had the honor of leading this organization, this coming year will be my 13th year as CEO. We are undertaking what we're calling a system optimization plan, which really will take a look at some of the local routes to make sure we're running an efficient system so that we can compete more aggressively for state funding and other funding sources. So just jumping in, and I'll be relatively brief here, but you have the presentation. We have 69 HRT bus routes which provide service between the six membered cities. We have the non-max commuter routes, which we now call the 757 Express, that provide the express service to the key regional employment centers like your shipyards. We have five peninsula commuter trips to Newport New Shipyard. We have three seasonal routes in Virginia Beach. And, you know, we just celebrated the 40th anniversary of the Trolleys. We have that wonderful Elizabeth River Ferry Route between Portsmouth and Norfolk, which is really an important route, which serves a lot of folks. And then, of course, the light rail, which seems to always get a lot of attention in the media. But you'll see, when we talk about our services, it's only about 10%. We're certainly proud of it, but we are very much a bus company. And our paratransit services that we provide to the disabled community. 67% of our trips are for essential services. And I think that speaks to why what we do is so important and then why it's been so rewarding in this particular role. I used to be a city manager. I'm a reformed city manager now. And I think my hair got darker after I left the field. But, you know, it really feels extremely good to know that you're getting people to where they need to go. 88% of the trips start by walking to the stop. Most of our riders have their final destination, that last mile, basically walking. About 39% of passengers transfer to another bus. And one of the things that Mr. Amoruso talks about, because of all the waterways and bridges, it's very hard to get a one-seat ride in Hampton Roads. In terms of our ridership here, again, as we point out, local bus ridership represents 75% of our overall system ridership. Rail at 11%, ferry 3%, the max routes about 3%. And then the wave service in Virginia Beach, which a lot of tourists, in addition to a lot of the beach workers, also use the wave. But who are our riders? About 72% of our bus riders are transit dependent, meaning they don't have a car. So we are their only form of transportation. So again, it warms my heart to know that we have a very vital role in making sure people can get to where they need to go. And oftentimes, when I'm talking to business groups, I make it very clear that we're not a social services. We get, and social services are critical for our communities. But we're getting people to work. We support the regional economy, and I think we should be viewed as such. 46% of our riders are from the ages 18 to 44 years old. So we've seen that number come down since our last study. About 52% of our riders are low income with income, family income below $25,089. And 89% of our riders speak English, which many transit agencies across the country have to have things translated. We really haven't had that need in this particular area. The majority of the rides are going to home, to work, and to other significant destinations like recreation, shopping, medical appointments, educational piece. And we have the breakout for your review and your leisure. 61% of our riders use transit between four and seven days per week. And I think that speaks to the fact that we are the only service for them. So, you know, as I talk to employees on a regular basis, we have to remain focused on the fact that we are getting people to where they need to go. In terms of car availability, when you look at the different modes, I think it speaks to who some of the customers are. System-wide, 42% of our riders have a vehicle for the trip, and 58% do not. Now, when you look at the ferry, you know, we have a lot of Coast Guard workers that use the ferry. And again, 93% of them have a vehicle, but they choose to use transit. And that's why, as we're improving the frequency and the level of service, we know that people will use transit if it's frequent and you can count on it from a reliability standpoint. Now, when you look at local buses, it's a different characteristic. 72% of those riders on our local buses do not have a vehicle for that trip. Only 28% do. The max routes, again, 46% of that group don't have a vehicle. But again, because these are important commuter routes, 54% of those that ride these buses actually have a vehicle. So I think it speaks to the service. And you see the deal with the rail as well as the wave. 63% of folks don't have a vehicle because they're vacationing, if you will. And again, we do have some, a lot of hospitality folks that use the Virginia Beach routes to and from, basically a max route to get there, but then they may use the wave to move around the beach. In terms of employment status, and I'm proud of this, 64% of our riders are indeed employed, 48% full-time, and certainly 16% part-time. Annual household income, I've spoken to this, I won't spend a lot of time here, but 52% of our customers have a total household income under $25,000. Now, how is service funded? I'm going to invite my colleague, Mr. Ray Amoruso, to address this.
Thank you, Mr. Harold.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone, Mr. Mayor, and Mr. City Manager, Vice Mayor, and members of council. I'll see if I can pick up the pace a little bit. I realize you're on a schedule. A lot of folks, when we're in public meetings, are very confused how transit service is funded at HRT. And actuality is defined under the cost allocation agreement that was set in place at the time of the merger back in 1999. Basically, as Mr. Harold already said, each city, and we have six cities that we serve, determine on an annual basis how much or how little service they want to fund every year. Staff makes a recommendation, works with your staff, and these letters are sent out to the city manager in the first week of October. The method of allocating the revenues that come into the agency and the expenses that are incurred at the agency are defined in the cost allocation. And we equitably divide up the revenues based on the hours of service in each of your cities and the fare box revenue that's collected on each of your routes. Federal and state formula funds are allocated also based on the amount of service each city provides and is willing to fund. What's left over, that the fare box, the state and federal funds, and any other revenues that are generated, the cities are responsible for, which collectively among the six cities, is about 40%. This is just each city, what they fund. Portsmouth and Norfolk share in the ferry. Otherwise, you look very much like the other cities with bus and paratransit. Of course, Norfolk has that other service called Light Rail. I want to talk briefly, for those of you who remember Carl Jackson, who was a city staff member who left in 2023. He was in front of council back in February 2023, talking about the proposed streamlining of some routes and improvements on your service changes. We had to defer those service changes till this October. I'm going to leave with the city clerk some information about the route changes. But on October 27th, there's some streamlining of routes and also some good things about the routes 44 and 45, in which customers will have a one-seat ride that they don't have to transfer. The biggest change that Mr. Jackson reviewed with you at the time is the elimination of the Route 43. Most of them, it's one of the lowest performing routes in the entire 69 bus system. But the strong parts of the routes will be covered by the Route 50 and the Route 57, so that we don't leave those parts up in London Boulevard uncovered. These go into effect October 27th. I'm going to be right back up, but I want to bring my colleague up to talk briefly about passenger amenities and ferry dock updates, Ms. Sybil Pappas. I'll be back.
Thank you, Ray. Thank you all for having me. I love the work that I do, and I'm super pleased to share it with you today. For people who haven't been out to the docks lately, you can see the rendering here of what the passenger amenities are going to look like at High Street. And that's representative of what we're going to have at all of the dock locations. So you can see the theme that influenced this design was the shipping container, sort of working waterfront theme. We presented this to council in 2020, actually, February 2020, just before COVID shut down the United States economy. And at that time, we were doing the design work for this, and also we were doing the rehab for the dock portion. So I'm glad to say that we have finished all of that work, and our docks are solid and stable. We've replaced any structural elements that needed replacing. And I just would like to mention that we did it with $3 million of federal money. That was 100% federal money. So I think this is something fantastic that HRT does very consistently, which is leverage state and federal money in the cities that we support, including Portsmouth. So now, these amenities that we're looking at here are going to be built with a state grant that we were successful in getting. We plan to have them installed by the end of this year. And so the work is happening right now. We have a contractor ready this week to extend the concrete pad that you see that High Street Shelter is placed on. It's going to extend a little bit into the stairs so that the passenger waiting area is big enough to accommodate all the people. I think for people who've been out at High Street, you've seen, we've relocated the ticket vending machine. So now it's on the same side as where the shelter will be. So it's just a much more seamless experience for ferry riders, much more convenient. We've added significant lighting. And I feel like this is always something important for us to make sure that people feel safe when they're comfortable and waiting. You know, I feel like especially in the evenings, sometimes it gets dark in the wintertime. We want these to be well-lit, and that is the case with this. On that note, we continue to add shelters across our system. Again, we're doing this mainly with regional money. When I started at HRT, we had a couple hundred shelters across the system. We had close to the national average of 9% of our stops were sheltered. Right now, as I stand before you, we're at 19% of our stops are sheltered. And before we're done spending regional money, 34% of our shelter, of our stops will be sheltered. So we're really leading the way, I think, for transit agencies across the country. When I say shelter, I always mean not only the shelter structure, but also it comes with solar lighting, trash can, bench, and ADA compliance. So always it comes with the curb cut and the ramp and the 40-inch path to make sure that people can access it. And finally, for me, I just mentioned that those amenities don't add as much value as I want them to if they are not sparkly. And so a part of what we're doing is also investing in making sure that they're clean. We've increased our cleaning contracts significantly so that every stop gets cleaned every day. And in some cases, we have cleaning happening twice a day because we have our own internal cleaning crew. So for people who haven't seen those bus stop signs, because we've been making changes to the signs, on the one side, you see all the routes that serve that stop. And then in the photo on the right, you see a UPC code that's large enough that you can drive by it as the passenger in the car and take a picture with your phone. And it'll take you to the website so that you can report something is not clean. And I really encourage people to do it. It's the very first time that we have real-time data collection, people able to tell us immediately, at the moment you see it, that there's trash on the ground. And then someone receiving that data who's able to dispatch our crew out to make sure that that stop gets cleaned if it's not already being cleaned. So that's sort of the highlights of what we're doing on the amenities piece. And I'm going to give that back to you, Ray Amoruso.
Thank you, Sybil. So Mayor Glover invited us here today to talk about, this is the system optimization plan. HRT, as well as many transit agencies across the country, are struggling to come out of the pandemic. We're facing multiple systemic challenges. It's not unique to HRT. Every transit property in the country is suffering with this. Travel pattern has, what did we learn coming out of COVID? People can work from home effectively, and companies are comfortable with it. I know when I grew up, that was not the case. You were expected at your desk, nine to five, five days a week, period, the end. The technology's evolved to the point that we are now comfortable that maybe folks can work from home. What has happened is has resulted in a drop in ridership because maybe two days a week, or maybe at least one day a week, somebody's working from home instead of using transit to get to work. They have started returning to work in person, but younger, the younger cohort, young people in the workforce, those 18- to 30-year-olds, like to work from home. The other big thing that nationally all agencies are facing is a chronic shortage of bus operators that hold commercial driver's licenses. People simply don't want to drive a bus anymore. It's a difficult job. I wouldn't want to do it. And we've been suffering a little bit coming back out of the pandemic to get back up to the levels we had in fiscal year 19, which was the last full year of service that wasn't impacted by the pandemic. Also, transit operating costs, both capital and operating, are rising faster between fuel and parts and other things than the sources that we get revenues from, from the state and federal government. So those are the four things I wanted to bring forward. So what do we do? Like many properties around the country, we're going to optimize our system of local bus networks. And that's a fancy way of saying, look at the strong performance, ensure that your resources are allocated to them. If you have a limited number of bus operators, you want to put them on the routes that are really doing well. Look at yourself in the mirror and be honest with yourself. We have some routes in this system that have been hanging around since 1999. We have some routes in this system that have been hanging around since 1999 that are underperformers in terms of the number of people that they carry. It's time to cut those services and figure out a better way to serve that handful of people that use those routes. So and it's, without reading the words, it's to better match our limited human resources and our dwindling financial resources and put it where you really need it. That's what the system optimization plan is. How do we do that? We use key performance indicators to understand what is the cost per mile of service, what is the cost per passenger, what is the revenue hours of service per mile, and how productive are those routes? We measure that by these evaluation criteria that look at daily ridership, the fare box recovery ratio, passengers generated per revenue hour of service. If you have a 60-minute trip, sorry, a 60-minute route, meaning once an hour a bus comes on that route, and you're only carrying three people, that's a lot of money to carry those three people. You can do it more effectively with demand-responsive services, you might have heard about microtransit. Financial productivity, how much money is generated at the fare box? How much does it cost to carry that person, that three people on that trip, for the amount of money it costs for an hour's service? What are your strong performers that don't need any help? What are your weaker performers that perhaps can do it in a different way? And then reliability, how reliable is that trip and its on-time performance? So some of the parameters that we're looking at in service planning, and we're doing this in partnership with each of the six cities with a planning and budget staff, we are going to look at our, be honest with ourselves, look at our operational capacity, which is, how many operators do we have, and what level of routes can we support with those operators reliably to keep that contract with our customers? What is the available funding coming in from the state and federal government? Is it stable? Is it dropping? And then, what are the post-pandemic travel patterns that have changed that we see every day now? Which routes are the ones that are really struggling to get back that ridership? So we will map out that local bus network with recommendations moving forward. We will look at trade-offs and priorities. Of course, equity implications, I don't want to leave a territory that is a geographically a coverage route, what we call it, but has low ridership without any transit options, because we know a lot of people rely on transit because they have so few choices in terms of mobility. So we will be looking at that, but our recommendations will also consider those transit-reliant populations and look at what mitigative strategies, what can we do that's not dependent on a fixed route service, but still gives a mobility option by transit? And of course, keeping our paratransit customers, there are rules related to Americans with Disability Act about people that live within 3/4 of a mile of a fixed route system, fixed route service. If that route goes away, how do we accommodate those customers? We will be looking at microtransit or demand-responsive services to be filling in some gaps and also provide the opportunity for the paratransit community. So our schedule, and this is, I promised Mr. Mayor, the last slide's coming up, we're going to have robust public and stakeholder outreach. Phase one, we've got the data analysis complete. We're going to be sitting down with your staff, and we're going to be sitting down with the other five city staffs, and then we're going to go out with those recommendations to the public to solicit input and comments. I would love the opportunity to come back and talk about what's, what we're looking at for Portsmouth changes, if any. And then, we'll bring a plan forward to the Transportation District Commission of Hampton Roads, the HRT board, for adoption in April, but before we do that, I would, really would like to brief each of the city councils, so you're aware of why some recommendations are being made to eliminate service and what the financial benefit and human resource benefit will be in exchange for that. I thank you for the opportunity tonight. I know we were a little bit long, council members, so I'm, and this is just a graphic of the project schedule, but thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Amaruso. And so Dr. Whitaker has a question?
Yes, it's for Mr., is it Amarosa?
Amaruso.
Amaruso, yes. Thank you for the presentation. Just curious, as you start making your decision about low ridership, what's the measure that you use in as far as when it's determined that a route is a low ridership route? What time period does that cover?
So we're going to be looking at five years. We're going to go back to the last normal year of service in fiscal year 19, but we'll look at all five years. We'll look at the returning ridership trends in the last two years. Fiscal year '20 was kind of a lost year. That was the, so we'll keep that aside, and we'll even look at FY '18 ridership. Some of the routes that are in the system, those 35 bus routes, have been low ridership routes since 1999. I understand why cities want to continue funding them, because every human being you're carrying has a mobility need, so I understand that, but they're a financial drag on the system overall and are not the best use of state and operating, and federal operating funds. The criteria we use are related to the number of people you carry per trip, the fare box recovery ratio. Back in 2016, as a system, we were averaging close to 18% back, before that it was 24%. We're down around 8% and 9% on some routes. So the dollar, the $2 that you drop in for a one-way ride is only paying 8% of the total cost of that trip. Those are not healthy numbers on some of these routes, so we'll be using those as key performance metrics.
So as you look to transition to the demand-responsive services, any indication on what that would be fare-wise for the riders versus what is being presently paid?
Our policy with the fare policy is, no matter what the mode, other than ADA, because that is dictated by Americans with Disability Act, they're all the same. So if we're at $2 today for a one-way trip, or all-day pass at $4.50, it'll remain the same for demand-responsive services.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilman Hugel, sir, you have the floor.
And Mr. Mayor, if I could just finish, I just want to-
Absolutely, Mr. Harrell.
Thank you very much. Just want to confirm with Dr. Whitaker that, you know, while we bring forward the recommendations, the final decision will be city council's decision, and our goal will be to make sure if there is a difficult decision to be made, that we create some opportunities for you to make sure that we are covering key areas. But I just wanted to make sure you were clear that we can make recommendations, but it's the city council. And I want to thank Mr. Carter, who's been coming to our board meetings. A lot of city managers only show up when there's a problem, so I just wanted to thank him for his commitment, and we will be working very closely with your staff to do as much work as we can on those issues. And also, we'll be happy at the appropriate time, Mr. Mayor, is to have one-on-ones with council members as well, so you can get down into the details. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Lucas Burke, ma'am, you have the floor.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Harrell, Mr. Amaruso, and Ms. Sybil for the presentation. I attended a breakfast with some other council members earlier in the year, and there was some conversation about other ride shares, Lyft, Uber. Is any of those services attributing to some of the loss in riders that we see?
That's a great question, one that's asked often. In other cities, like in the Northeast, New York, Philadelphia, Boston, yes. Not so here. We have a different demographic in terms of people who need mobility services when they can't drive or don't own a car. It's not affordable to them because of the Lyft and Uber is in a stratosphere that they can't afford on a daily basis. On occasion, when a child is sick and they have to get home in a hurry, they'll spend it, but for the most part, it's not the same factor as it is in the big urban centers in the Northeast, or out in California. Okay, thank you.
Councilman Hugel, sir, you have the floor.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Harrell, thanks for bringing you and your team here this evening to brief us. I just have a question. Ms. Pappas mentioned, is it safe? I understand we had some security issues on the ferry just in the last couple of days. I wonder, I'm sure you track safety in your ridership. Are we trending in the right direction or in the wrong direction on rider safety?
Yeah, thank you for that. So that's an active conversation we're having every day, you can imagine, with our operators and all of the operators of all of our modes, because we have seen significant upticks in incidents. You know, we spend a lot of energy with our staff to work on de-escalation techniques, and that is absolutely the first line of defense. Separate from that, we've also applied for a lot of grant money this year and in the last year to be able to support COVID cabins, is what I call them. They look like clear plexiglass cabins that basically turn the bus section where the operator sits into a cockpit that's locked. And so right this moment, as we speak, we are in the process of converting the last 145 buses that we have to be able to also have those cabins. You know, it's not a foolproof solution, but it does offer a level of security that our staff really appreciates, and we've seen it de-escalate incidents also. But as you well know, sometimes the police are called, and it's complicated for an agency like ours, because we support six cities, and so the police that are called have to be appropriate to the city limits within which you are. And so even that is a little bit of a question sometimes, like where you are and where the bus is heading and where it can stop safely. So there are a lot of challenges, just making sure that our staff feels like they have the support that they need, but I think that's probably our number-one goal this past year, is to try to make our employees feel like we're supporting them. And our customers, right? Our customers are riding those same vehicles, and they're experiencing it in the exact same way, and maybe even worse in some cases, because their trips are being disrupted.
And I just wanted to say, we have reached out to the Portsmouth Police Department to create a stronger relationship, because we've had a couple of recent incidents with some young folks on the ferry, and we've added some of our security folks as well. So we've made some of those connections, because we also, in addition to our security officers and the contract that we have, we also contract with police officers part-time. So we certainly want to strengthen that relationship, and Mr. Carter will certainly touch base with you further on that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Moody, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. I was surprised that with the lack of shelters in the number of stops, I think you mentioned 30% was going to happen soon with additional funding. I would think that is a large detriment to ridership. Obviously, nobody wants to stand in the hot sun or the cold weather, rainy weather. So where is that as far as priorities on your punch list?
Yep. So just to put it in context, the national average for shelters is 8% or 9% of stops. So right now, we're at 19%. I think we're crushing it, but we're going to get to 34% as we continue to spend some regional money that is now dedicated to transit in Hampton Roads. We're spending $8.5 million to install those amenities, those shelters and amenities, and we're a little bit more than halfway through that. So we have amenities to install. The total, when we're done, will be 923 stops. Out of 2,700 stops, we'll have amenities, and right now, we're at about 550 stops with amenities across six cities.
So what's the timeline to even get into?
Yeah, so that's a hard question for me to answer, because the ones that we've installed thus far are sort of the low-hanging fruit. It's the easy ones, where the sidewalk is plenty wide and it already complies with ADA, and we can just go put the shelter out and not do a lot more. The ones that we're working on now require easements, they have right-of-way challenges, they have other ADA accessibility issues that maybe require the cities to do some work too, in order for us to be able to support it. I would say probably the last half is going to probably take us another two and a half, maybe three years, to get to all of them, but they make significant improvements to the system as we do these, because these are the ones where we're going to be, you know, installing a little bit of sidewalk to connect a stop to the rest of the sidewalk in the city block. You know, some of the infrastructure that is needed just to make the cities more livable.
Well, it's just negative on the ridership, it's got to be. The other thing, my colleague was talking about crime, I noticed the advertisements on buses these days is wrapped, that you can see out of, but you can't see in. Is that, I would think that that would be a detriment to passenger-on-passenger crime, even with the bus drivers. Any thought been given to that, that issue?
That's a good question. A lot of people ask that question all the time. First of all, the advertisements obviously generate revenue, which is-
Sure.
-a benefit for all the cities. We have, every bus comes equipped with several cameras inside the vehicle, as well as around the vehicles on the exterior, and it records and captures any activity. Plus, the operator has an ability to talk directly to dispatch if something's happening inside the bus. I've heard it before, but frankly, sometimes a lot of the activity is occurring at the bus stop or in the transit center, but it does occur on the bus too. But it's a trade-off. We're trying to generate revenue to help support the cities, but at least we can capture whatever activity is going on, on the cameras, and turn that over to the police department if something happens.
Thanks.
Dr. Whitaker, sir, you have the floor.
Yes, I guess this may be for Mr. Harrell. I know our school system has been, and across the districts, have been experiencing the issue with drivers and having drivers, is that an issue with you all?
Yes, absolutely. Now, we were very recently, and we're very proud to have completed union negotiations, which will allow for a significant increase for our operators and mechanics. So we believe that's going to help add additional operators, because we can't add these new regional routes and provide the level of service that the community needs without that. So we have begun advertising additionally, so I would say this time next year, we should be much stronger in terms of the number of staff that we have to operate the system.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you.
And the last thing I would add, Mr. Harrell and team, there is an opportunity for my colleagues and myself to ride the bus. If you've never experienced riding a bus, I think that might be something that our council could sign up for. What do you think, council members? All of us riding a bus together? Okay, we'll talk about that a little later, but in any event-
Yes, I'll say, you know, we've had, Hampton has done it, Norfolk has committed to do it-
That's right.
-hadn't quite scheduled it yet, but it really is a cool opportunity, because we get to ride around, you can point out areas of concern, we can talk about where improved service will be, so I'm trying to throw my best pitch, Mr. Carter, on that.
So we're going to work on that, because I've ridden a bus before, and I would love to have my colleagues and some of our citizens, as well as our board member here, Mr. Goodwin, to all ride the bus together. I think it would be a good experience.
Absolutely, and he's jumped on that immediately, so we would encourage everybody to consider that.
Thank you all. Thank you for all this great information, and thanks for all you do.
Thank you for supporting transit.
Yes, sir. Mr. Carter, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Harrell. Our last presentation this evening is our city engineer, Mrs. James Wright. It's going to cover several pieces of our CIP project. First off, with the ARPA funding piece. So, Mr. Wright, if you're prepared?
Yes, sir.
The floor is yours, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the city council. I'm going to give you a brief update of our ARPA projects. Start with a little bit of timeline here, so we received the ARPA funding in two rounds, first round in 2021, second round in 2022. There are non-ARPA categories, 50, just under $57 million. First round of ARPA projects was just about $33 million. Second round was just under $23 million. These are the categories. And the first round of 32.7 million, the highlighted numbers, you see, will be the projects that I'll be discussing in a little bit more detail. The second round. And so the first ARPA project to talk about is the elevated water storage tanks. The ARPA funds on that project were $3 million. That project is complete. You see the contract price, the final contract price, there's a slight adjustment. You see the MWE utilization, just over 12%. It's completed in May 2024, and there are no ARPA funds remaining on that project. It's completed in May 2024, and there are no ARPA funds remaining on that project. The ARPA fund set aside for the schools' projects, the schools receive their own ARPA funds. However, their funding, their project funding is reimbursable. So to get them jump-started, the city put ARPA funds, $1 million worth, to get them jump-started for design. You see the list of projects that were, we assisted them with, with the design. And the ARPA funds remaining in that category are 13 million, 13,000, just over $13,000. The Chiller projects are out for, I think they awarded the Chiller projects, and they're working to award several of the others. And they met their deadline, which was in, was a September 30 deadline for those projects that needed to be advanced. Public safety complex, half a million dollars to get through, get from the programming phase to the 30% design phase. That design phase was completed in March 2024. Their current CIP funds progressed that to 90% design. There are no ARPA funds remaining in that category. Design for projects, $275,000. There were some additional funds used from that line to help with the public safety complex and also with the Douglas Park School HVAC replacement design. And there are 50 cents left in that category. LED street lighting upgrades, $1.1 million in that, in that category. You see the areas that have been completed, a number of neighborhoods, and we're also on some of the main arterial roadway corridors. Dominion has us submitting work orders to them, groups of 50. And so if you have a larger neighborhood, you have several work orders in that neighborhood. Along the corridors, you have several work orders. They get the work orders, provide us an estimate. We approve the estimate and then they go forward and do the work. Some of those that are completed were out of the heat report from the police department, some of the high-crime areas. Just looking at the map, Craddock South Side, Dale Homes, Lincoln Park, were some of those areas that were addressed from the heat map that was provided by PD. Just over $600,000 left in that code. And we're continuing to generate work orders to turn into Dominion so they can exhaust those funds. Sanitary sewer pump station upgrades, $3.2 million. You have three tiers. These are the pump stations that were the most critical, identified by Public Utilities. Tier one being those ones that needed less work, but could, but that were in very, very poor condition. And then you go to tier two and tier three. As you go through the tiers, more work is needed at the stations. And the stations that are listed in each contract are right there underneath those tiers. There are zero funds remaining in that ARPA category. All of those are under contract. Tier one is substantially complete. Tier two and tier three should be completed sometime next year. Security fencing at Frederick Boulevard, the operations center. We have a proposal from the vendor that's currently under review. The funds are just short of the proposal amount. And we are going over the MWE paperwork with the supplemental. But right now, it appears that it's 10% MWE participation. Prentice Place, Phase One, the neighborhood visualization, water, sewer, drainage, streets, sidewalks, all those things that come with the neighborhood visualization project. Design is complete for all three phases. We're focused on Phase One. ARPA funds, city ARPA funds, just over half a million dollars. Funds from the state ARPA funds specifically related to sewer, $2.2 million. 2.23, 2.2, yeah, $2.2 million. The project estimate is 7.6. The balance of those funds will come from CIP funds for water and also for drainage. Charles Peak Little League Complex, $5.2 million. Basically, a total upgrade of the complex. You go from the fields that are out there now to four fields with a press box, concession stands, bleachers, parking, landscaping and other amenities. The value engineering study is complete. We have a meeting next week to go over those recommendations so we can incorporate those into the plan so that we can advertise in October. The project estimate is at $6.5 million. The VE study is intended to bring that number down and whatever is left over will be covered by CIP funds. The Housing Resource Center, which is the homeless shelter. You see the details for the facility there, 50 sleeping units, four ADA-accessible sleeping units, so 54 altogether. You have all the services that you would need at a facility of this nature as far as intake, operations, day services, learning center, health center, and dining center. We're currently assembling the final specifications. The plans are undergoing courtesy review by the building department. We're looking to advertise that project in October. The project estimate is 13 million. ARPA funds remaining are 8.6. There are some VHS and CIP funds to cover the difference. It also includes the, so it's three floors. So the first floor is the floor that you basically do the intake down to two-floor sleeping units. The fourth floor is the shell. And that'll be an alternate bid, bid item to see what the cost comes in at. Ebony Heights West Outfall Improvement, ARPA funds on that is $2.6 million. That is to provide flooding relief to the western part of the neighborhood, right there in Churchland Boulevard, near those apartments. It takes an additional outfall down towards Portsmouth Chesapeake City Line. The project estimate for that is $2.2 million. We're currently working with Colonial Pipeline on the final utility coordination so that we can get those plans advertised in October. Pollock Works Operations Building, $2.8 million. ARPA funds in that project, that's the metal, big blue metal building at the back of the compound you see Alpha Phillips, needs to be replaced. Final comments are being incorporated into those plans, looking, also looking to advertise that in October. The current project estimate is $4.8 million. There are $2.4 million remaining in the ARPA budget. And lastly, as part of our, our goal to get additional MWE participation, we're going to be planning an expo in October so that we can preview these projects to get additional eyes on the project, to get additional participation in the project. Likely will be at Bydaway so that folks can learn how to bid on city projects, what these projects are about, and general requirements for city projects. We've had discussions with former city managers and also with this city manager about doing a similar-type expo, potentially on a quarterly basis for all CIP projects just to continue to try to increase our MWE participation. With that, I'll take any questions on any of the ARPA projects that were discussed.
Dr. Whitaker, sir, you have the floor.
Yes, I thank you, Mr. Wright. I did notice that for several of the projects that were completed, that there was no MW, MWBE participation. Any particular reason why that's the case?
So for the ones that were, were design-only, those projects were, were out before we had put those, that information into the, into the task orders for those folks. And the one for the pump station, they use, delivering those projects by himself. He's, he's not having any subs or whatever, so he's self-performing those jobs.
You said they, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I thought you were finished, I'm sorry.
Then I can step back through it. It may be easier to go back through each one.
Mm-hmm.
If, that's okay?
Yeah, you, you said that they were put out before. It was, the rationale you gave, you said that
So.
the projects were put out before. I didn't catch that.
So for construction projects, they all have an MWE component. For the ones that are strictly designed, those contracts didn't include it. They were before our new contracts that have the MWE component to it.
Okay.
So for these design projects, didn't have an MWE component. But construction, it does. Design, design. This is being done by Dominion, so we don't have any control over that piece of it. This contractor is self-performing for the pump station projects. This contractor does have MWE participation.
So, so the, the self-performing one, which one was that again?
That's the one with the pump stations.
Okay. So will, will our, I guess this for the city attorney, will, will our language capture these self-performing companies? Or maybe for the city manager. Will, will the language of our policy capture these self-performing companies?
You have the floor, sir.
Dr. Whitaker, for the policy, it doesn't matter if you're self-performing or you have subs. The requirement still remains the same. If you're self-performing and don't have anybody, or if you don't qualify as a MWEB, WMBE, then you don't count as part of our numbers. Now, if, when we design these contracts, if we put a stipulation in there for a, and a, and a goal that we're trying to achieve, when we evaluate, even those that are going to do the self-performing, they fall under that same criteria.
Right.
So if, now if we can't find anybody else naturally, they'll probably get the work. But if there are others who will have a minority participation piece, they're getting more point based on that.
Yeah, if I remember correct, there is documentation that even self-performing companies have to submit.
Absolutely, sir. So either they're going to participate and do as we're asking them to do, or they have to suffer the consequences of not doing it. Even if they're going to self-perform, that doesn't alleviate, that's, that's our requirement.
Right, right, okay, yeah. Well, this is after the fact now because this has already been expended.
Right.
Okay, okay, yeah. The, the other question for, for the costs that we have here, can, can council get any update on any cost overrides that occurred on these projects?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Do you know a timeline of when we'd be able to get that information?
Well, there's only, well, right now, you only have the one that's been completed. And these are under construction, so in a week or so.
So. And Manager Carter, could you, could you take that, that part in terms of reporting back on the requested information? Thank you, sir.
Absolutely, we'll make sure that. As we're expending any funds on this, we can give you a report on any overrides that we do.
Yeah, I was, I was curious on the ones that have been completed using ARPA funds, if there are any cost overrides on those projects, and if so, how much?
All right, we'll, we'll go through all of them and then just provide a written report back to you. Is that okay?
Okay, yes, sir.
Thank you.
And then the, the last question on the Human Resource Center. Where, where are we timeline on that project again?
Yeah, so we're basically wrapping that up and getting ready to advertise. The, the experts on that, the Dr. Washington, Dr. Whitaker no longer here, and I forget, the other participant, basically gone through and selected how the building was going to look. The last thing that they did is look at the materials that are inside of the building and that type of thing for, to get the interiors done. That's being incorporated into the final plans and will be ready to advertise here shortly in October.
And I know, I think it was Councilman Tillich, when some initial plans were presented to us, there was supposed to be, I believe, additional rooms that were added and capacity for families, I think. Was, was that incorporated into the design that's going to be put out?
For families?
Yeah.
So I think he addressed that when you mentioned to the fourth floor being a shell.
Yes, sir.
And then based on the funding, if that was going to happen or not. But the fourth floor was supposed to be a shell for additional space in the future.
Oh, okay, okay. So that's not going to be built out?
Well, we don't know. So when we, so it'll be, it'll be a bid alt. So you have your main bid package is the main building, that fourth-floor shell is the alt.
Okay.
And based on the pricing when it comes in, if you can afford it, you go ahead and do, do the shell.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Councilman Moody, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks for the presentation, Mr. Wright. Couple of questions on the schedule for stations on bypass. I think it's 10 of them. Are they, are those on pump and haul currently?
The next, the next presentation will answer everything which are about pump stations.
Yeah, there's another presentation, Mr. Moody.
There's a, there's a part two.
A part two, so we're going to go through the questions on this.
But before we get to that, I do have a question. The other lane on the Churchland Bridge, what's the holdup on that reopening?
Waiting on the impact to continue. It's basically the crash barrier coming that way. And until that gets installed, we can't open the lane.
Crash barrier, the railing?
Yeah, like down the middle. So to keep traffic, if traffic goes to cut over, it hits the barrier instead of driving right into the other lane.
Okay. When's the, what's the timeline for that?
I have a meeting on Monday with the contractor. I can report back after.
Same contractor's been doing the whole bridge project or a separate?
No, it's the, the same prime contractor for the entire time that the bridge has been going on.
Okay. How's that reference what the contractor's original schedule and completion date?
The original completion date was March 2023. But the, the project started, his actual start date was the day we shut down with COVID. And so he's had a number of COVID-related issues to work through as he's worked through this project with COVID impacting subs, materials and such. So it's not to be unexpected that it's gone on longer than the anticipated completion date. As far as interruptions to traffic, there have been a lot less than I thought there would be. But like most citizens, I'm ready for them to be done and, and out of, and out of the way.
Well, were there any penalties for the contractor?
It's kind of hard to come up with penalties for the contractor in a COVID situation like that if they, if there's supplies that he can't get a, a good date on a supply date. It's kind of hard to penalize him for something that's beyond his control.
Was there language in the?
Yes.
Mr. Carter, sir, you have the floor. He wants to add something to the discussion.
Yeah, that's what I was about to say. As I look at the, some of the contracts that we have already had in place, there's not a language that can actually do that. So you can't come afterwards and decide that you want to penalize you.
You can't do it after the time.
Exactly.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Wright.
Vice Mayor Lucas Burke, ma'am, you have the floor.
Thank you. Mr. Wright, thank you for the presentation. My question was associated with Dr. Whitaker's concern about the 50 beds. I don't know, in my mind, I thought I heard 100 and the council asked to double that amount, which was going to be the build-out with the fourth floor. But, and are there any new renderings to, to show us that layout?
We can provide you with renderings. I haven't necessarily think they're new, they're more fleshed out. It's always been the 50 because that's the number that the experts basically talked about from the very beginning, what's that population out there, that population that you're seeing. And that's the number that they decided on based on what they're seeing and what they anticipate it to be. And then the council requested additional space and that's why you have the fourth-floor shell.
Right, okay. And then my next question is, we're on the bottom of a lot of the projects that are listed. There are ARPA funds remaining. Is that just stay in a kitty? I mean, I know that they're encumbered. I mean, I know that we had to be able to tell the, the state that these funds were being allocated for certain projects. So do we use those or do we have projects that these are going to be reallocated to? Or am I just reading this wrong?
No, so for these specific projects, and I can go back to sort of walk you through. So the, the schools' projects, they may need some additional funds for some additional things that they're working on. The elevated tank rehab has zero, nothing in public safety, 50 cent in the design for projects. LED street lighting, so as Dominion continues to get their work orders in, they continue to move, that number continues to come down. to get their work orders in, they continue to move, that number continues to come down. Sanitary sewer pump stations, all those contracts are awarded, so there's zero funds in that line item. The security fencing, if proposal, if once vetted, it is, is valid and we can move forward, that'll, that'll go away. So those $500,000 will go away. Once this project is bid out for Prince Place, so the next projects are projects that haven't been advertised, they're not in construction yet. Once we get those bids in, it's, it's likely that they're going to exceed ARPA funds available, so those funds will go away when those projects are awarded. And they will be basically under contract and funds encumbered prior to the end of the year.
Okay. And my last question, I, I was asking about the pump station, because we had a resident in Port North, but I, I think I flipped a couple pages, and I, I see it under there, Douglas Avenue Pump Station. So that wasn't used with ARPA funds, that's going to be used with some city funds to, to look at that?
Yes. The issue with the Douglas Pump Station is actually more with the actual main itself and not the station. It just happens to be close to the station where he, where the issue is basically being realized by the resident.
Okay, all right. Thank you, sir.
Councilman Hugel, sir, you have the floor.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. You and Mr. Wright. So on the streetlight project, so you said that Dominion is processing work orders. Are they waiting on us, or are we waiting on them?
I don't think they're just like waiting. We give them to them in batches, and so we give them a, a number of batches every so often. We can't overload them, because we're not the only person giving them work orders. So I think there's a, there's a good give and take. I don't necessarily think it's, it's, we're waiting on them or they're waiting on us. It's just a process we've got worked out.
But we have $608,000 of streetlights that we know need to be replaced. Why don't we just tell them where they are and get out of their way?
Because they won't do it like that. They, you have to give them a, a work order that is 50 in a batch. So you, you break it up. So for instance, Craddock, I think, had either five or six work orders. We gave them Craddock and one other neighborhood at the same time. And if we're going down Greenwood Drive, down the arterial, you break it up. And so they get that Greenwood Drive done in batches of 50. They won't accept anything that exceeds that. That's their requirement. That's what every city's going by. So we're following their rules to basically get this work done.
Okay. When, when does the ARPA funding drop dead? And is the drop dead based on encumbering the funding or on expending the funding?
Mr. Carter, you have the floor, sir.
There's actually two separate dates that you work with. December 2024, you have to have it encumbered, which means you have to already have decided where you're going to spend the money and, and move it forward. I think we have two years after that to actually get it spent.
Okay, so back to the streetlight question then. Are we going to have $608,000 of streetlights encumbered with Dominion using this 50 street light at a time process? Or are we going to get to December and discover that we still got half a million dollars sitting there to do streetlights that absolutely need to be done?
Well, I understand that encumbered and work orders are not the exact same thing. Encumbered is, I said, hey, I'm going to spend $600 million with you to do work orders. Work orders is actually when I send you the batch of 50 to get the job done. The money's already been encumbered. We're just actually spending the money a little bit at the time.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Councilman Tillich, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you. So my question is more geared towards city manager. Can we get a breakdown? So on page, remember pages, is the page where it lists the ARPA projects, first round and ARPA page, second round, of how the funding was broken down into categories? Can we get a report back to council on how the, on the spin down on that? So like, for example, I'll use one, for example, the police vehicle replacement. Out of the 1.7 million, how many, how much has been spent to date? If we can get that for each one of those items on both pages, so then we'll have an idea of, you know, what needs to be spent, if there needs to be anything re-appropriated or reallocated later on.
Yes, I just, um, more clarity on the encumbered versus expended. There were two rounds of funding. So the deadline date of December 2026, that would be two years after. That applies to this, to both of those rounds.
Yeah, it, it applies to the total badge.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. You can go and proceed with your next proposal, I guess. Mr. Carter, is that all?
So the, the next update is on the sanitary sewer pump stations. So Public Utilities has 65 sanitary sewer pump stations. We have an aged system that requires significant work to maintain regulatory compliance. Over the last two years, Public Utilities spent 2.2 million in CIP funds. We've encumbered 3.2 million in ARPA funds. So in April 2022, you had 20 sewer pump stations that were out of service. 14 pump stations were on bypass. Nine of those have been restored to service. Six stations were on pump and hall. All six of those stations are no longer on pump and hall. Currently, you have 10 pump stations that are on bypass, four under construction using ARPA or CIP funds with completion anticipated in 2025. You have bid packages for advertisement for two and four stations going into design development. Here's what that list looks like on the next page with the pump stations and where they are in that status list. And then you have some other pump station activities, showing a few other pump stations. Highlight it down at the bottom of the page, you see Douglas Avenue Suction Main Replacement Phase One, project currently ongoing. Our vacuum assisted sanitary sewer is the, an aged part of our, our sanitary sewer system that gives Public Utilities a number of headaches, and most of pump and hall is related to either those, those lift stations or that system. And with this work going on currently to be completed, I think about this time next year, that will significantly reduce a lot of the, the, the issues that Public Utilities is experiencing and that, that you're hearing about from your constituents. They do have a new tool that they use for assessing pump stations. In consult with one of their on-call consultants, they were able to develop a, a survey tool, Survey 123, where they actually able to go in and do an overall assessment of the pump stations. It's an interactive tool that allows them to have a dashboard to see what's going on with the pump stations. Just here in September, they completed the assessment of all the pump stations. Here's a snapshot from the dashboard. So you have 11 stations that are good, 23 that are in fair condition, that mean the station is operational but needs some upgrades. 21 stations are in poor condition, meaning the station is still operational, but has two or more components that are in poor condition or that have failed. And those 10 stations that you see have failed in our bypass pump, those are the ones that were listed in our previous slide that are either under contract or design work occurring. This next slide is a map that was in your legislative packet. It shows the stations that would be potentially included in the legislative request, along with ARPA-funded stations, and then the last station are those that have federal funds on them for design. The, get to your question, Councilman Moody, how many stations are currently on pump and hall? Currently, we have zero stations on pump and hall. There is no pump and hall being done by contractors. Public Utilities has two pump and hall trucks that are currently active and working in Port North, which is where the most problematic of the vacuum assisted sewers are. Okay. To the next piece, in your agenda later on, you have a, an item for the Court Street, Green Street project to modify the contract to exceed 25% of the contract capacity. This gives you an overview of that project. Court Street, Green Street project, identified in the Bill 1 Comp Plan, demonstration project that incorporates a complete Green Street concept, over top a street segment within the downtown master utility project. It's basically a retrofit of an existing street, satisfies the city's stormwater permit. It's part of its five-year permit cycle requirement. Just a brief overview here of the downtown master utility project. Basically downtown and old town revitalized business district and residential district, bring it up to current standards, meet sanitary sewer compliance, water pressures, water flows to support residential and commercial development. Overall plan was divided into four quadrants. Phase One and Two A are complete. Just a little bit of history of those phases, complex phases. Phase One exceeded 25% of the contract value. Phase Two A was right around 17% of the contract value. The Court Street, Green Street project straddles Quadrants Two and Three. Just a brief timeline of the project. Activities started in early 2022. Contract activities, what should we say, 2021, sorry about that. Contract activities sort of halted when we came across private utility issues with Dominion and Columbia Gas. You'll see the adjusted completion date was supposed to be September 2022, in small print, but I'll go through each one of these bullets. Columbia Gas started their utility relocations that were supposed to start on August 2021. Actual start date for their relocations was April. Their relocations weren't complete until around the Thanksgiving holidays. Dominion, their internal teams had some coordination issues where the streetlight folks were aware of the project. The underground utility folks were not. Their dub banks needed to be relocated out of, out of conflict with some of the project activities. Their work started in 2023, in March of, actually their relocation started in 2020, yeah, in 2023, after being notified in 2021. So two years later, they were actually able to get their stuff relocated out of the way. Our contractor, after pausing for about a year, wasn't able to restart until August 2023. Currently, everything in the project, except for the final paving, which includes crosswalks, striping, and the punch list items, is complete. And just, just a list of the justification for the change orders. Just working in an older area with aged facilities, not having good records of what's actually in the ground. The delays with both of those private utilities being Dominion and Columbia Gas, and then the reget, the renegotiation of the, renegotiation of the contract prices, just because of all those delays that were associated with it. And then additional conflicts and unsuitable conditions. That's just the, the background, just to go along with the, the item you'll see later.
Councilman Hugel, sir, you have the floor.
So the statement on the current status slide is a bold statement. Except for final paving and punch list, the work is complete. I just spoke to Court Street residents last night, and they are still extremely unhappy with where things stand. Are there 1,000 items on the punch list? What, what does the punch list look like?
Punch list was 63 items as of last Friday, all but, I want to say, five or six items on that punch list were complete.
So what are we doing to reengage the Court Street residents? Because they're mad as hell. And I don't think they think that paving and five punch list items gets them finished.
Mr. Carter, you have the floor, sir.
Yes, sir. I think there's going to be a disconnect between what the Court Street residents assume is the completion of the project, was actually the completion of the project. There's some things that they want as amenities that was not really designed in the project. The project's going to end when the paving is done. There's a problem with the paving right now just because of supply. That's a small job with a specialized mix of, of asphalt. So we're trying to get to the, the head of the line to get that done. The manufacturer for the asphalt has other jobs that they prefer doing above that small job. So just trying to get to the head of the line on that is, is a challenge for us. But once that paving is done, and there, and I provided that, that punch list to the residents, oh, well, to the, the Old Town Civic Group, anyway, and we're checking off those things on the punch list. So they're aware of what the punch list is. They're aware of where we're staying with the paving. But like I said, there's going to be a disconnect between where Old Town citizens believe should be done and what the actual design of the project is to be done.
Okay. So do we have a plan to address the disconnect?
Absolutely.
For, for instance, if a senior resident can't get to the street, to their car, without walking their walker an extensive distance, is that a punch list item, or is that a disconnect that we're going to have to address later?
What we've actually done is made sure that there are no extensive walks for any of the Old Town residents, well, any of those residents in that area that we've made the redesign on. No, everybody won't have a dedicated walk across there for, for each resident. But there will be no one that have to, to go any extensive distance to cross it. That has already been addressed. Now, does that satisfy everyone? Absolutely not. But we still can't go back and put a cross for every resident that's there.
So, so I interrupted when you said we're going to come back and address the disconnect. Can you talk to that, please?
Oh, absolutely. It is my desire that once we get through with the project, to go and announce that we're done with the project and make sure that we capture those things that people want, but give them some real expectation about when and if it can be done. I think there was some unaddressed expectation setting when this project was done. And I realize the frustration with this. I'm frustrated with it. I haven't even been here that long.
Right.
But frustration don't mean the project changed because you're frustrated. So what, having told Mr. Wright we're going to do, we're going to finish the project. We're going to end this project so that we can go in and do this. Say, hey, guys, the project is over. All right. Now, is there other things that you want done? Absolutely. And if we have the budget and, and the ability to get some of those things done, we will. But I will never promise you that everything on your wish list is going to be done.
Okay. Regarding the change order justification, do, do we have some policy, city manager, that requires the staff to alert you and us when we hit those notification thresholds, $50,000 or 25% of the project?
Yes.
And, and so are we complying with that, or are we late?
We're late.
Okay. Do, do we understand why we're late? And here's the reason I'm asking. Time's money in this business. So the Cherslam Bridge, I'm betting, when you get done doing a postmortem on the Cherslam Bridge, we are probably going to come back and talk about paying the rest of the money that we haven't incurred yet on the Cherslam Bridge. Rail to trail, I'm betting there's a bill that we haven't talked about yet. The sewer pump stations, I mean, Councilman Whitaker asked the perfect question. How, how far over are we on fixing, I, I mean, it's a $62 million project to fix all the sewer pump stations, according to our CIP book, and we're only $27 million into a $62 million project? And we're only $27 million into a $62 million project. And I'm betting we're already overspent on the $27 million that we have contracted for. And, and, and I'm really concerned because we're getting ready to do innovation district development. We're getting ready to do downtown development. And as you and I have talked about, with the issues that we have seen with project management on Court Street, Cherstlin Bridge, rail to trail, there's some indications that we're, we're getting ready to go do, go, go big on some development stuff. And we got to get our collective lessons learned out of these three relatively straightforward projects so that we don't goof up the big things that are out there coming.
Can I address that?
You have the floor, sir.
Without airing too much of our dirty laundry, I am not satisfied with the way Portsmouth had handled projects and contracts in the past.
Yeah.
Definitely not satisfied. And as we're moving past what we've done to address how we would do these things in the future, we can't look at what we did in the past and try to do that same thing in our future. That just will not work. And the way we're trying to deal with this now is by, I'm scrutinizing every contract that comes by. Right now, there are probably a, I, I can't even tell you how many purchases I have rejected simply because the contract wasn't right. And I'm not, I'm not talking about contracts from the last three or four months. I'm talking about contracts from the last few years. That's, but that's a, that's a heavy lift. That's a heavy, that's a big change of philosophy in how we've done things in the past versus what will be accepted in the future. So I'm just as frustrated with the process as, as you guys are. But in the frustration has to be expectations set about what we will do and what we won't accept, how we handle contractors, what we will accept from them and what we want, how we handle projects, the attention that they get and the attention that they like, and how we close out projects. Because one of the problems I see is closing out projects. We have a lot of things on the books. We're doing a lot of things. We're trying a lot of things. But it's kind of like sometime that shiny new object syndrome. Start a, start a great project. It is a great project, but it, it gets grinding through the project. But then a very new, cool new project shows up, so we, we start paying attention to that one. And we get, forget about the one that we already had on the books. Again, I, I don't want to really go into a whole lot of this, but things will change.
So, so I appreciate the discipline that you're putting into this. And, and we just need to hold the process people accountable to make sure that we're following our rules, following our policies. And, and, you know, I, I get it that you believe the buck stops with you. We, we got a whole bunch of other folks where the buck needs to stop before it ever gets to you. So I appreciate what you're trying to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? Well, that concludes our presentation. And are there any liaison reports from our council colleagues? Seeing none, that will conclude our public work session.
One more thing before we finish.
Mr. Manager, sir, you have the floor.
Yes, sir. Just before we finish, and thank you guys for your time this evening. I have a couple of announcements to make. One is for our Parks and Recreation Department. Mr. Mark Palmetruck and his group recently attended the Annual Conference of Virginia Recreation Park Society and walked away with two, two awards. One is for the best new special event category for the holiday lights at the park and also one for the best new renovation and addition for bricks and mortar category for the neighborhood facility and recreation center. Congratulations, Mark, and his team for that. And finally, I'd like to introduce to you Mr. Gerard Roberts. He's here with us today. He's our new Public Works Director. Born and raised in Portsmouth, and he's come back to help us make our city better. Mr. Roberts is here and he's already started and working in our public. He's the director of our Public Works Department. Thank you.
Thank you, Manager Carter, and welcome aboard, sir, Mr. Roberts. That concludes our work session for today. This meeting is adjourned and we will convene at 7:05, 7:05.